tribulation period which includes the last three and a half years, what some call the great tribulation. The distinguishing features of the post-tribulation view is that they they believe that the gathering of the saints will occur after a seven-year tribulation period. They believe that it is a blessing to be headed for the testimony of Jesus. Whereas the pre-tribulationists believe only those who need to repent of sin will be left behind. Well, basically, I think that means that aren't saved. Essentially taking the doctrine of purgatory according to that. Cause that's what Catholics believe that people aren't saved. Will go into purgatory and prayers can free them eventually. And there was also a continuation of this. Post-tribulation believes the great tribulation starts at the abomination of desolation. Matthew twenty-four fifteen and ends at the battle of Armageddon, Revelation sixteen, twelve through sixteen. They believe the rapture will take place at the same time Jesus is coming on a white horse at the second coming. And they will meet Jesus and welcome him to earth. And I was reading about that. They basically was saying the rapture is Christians going out as a welcoming party to escort Jesus back to the earth for the battle of Armageddon. And it says the battle of Armageddon will begin at this point. And then this one is the view that a lot of Christians hold, the pan-tribulation view. This rapture view believes it will all pan out in the end. That was my humor for the lesson.
I know the answer, which one's gonna happen.
Do ya?
Yeah, cause it says so right here. Thessalonians four one, for this is the will of God.
That's right.
Is joy.
Well, I don't think that we have to guess which one's gonna happen and I challenge you to let the Holy Spirit teach you what the word of God says. And I think by the end of this, you'll know which one is real. Alright.
What's your choice?
I'm not gonna say until we get beyond that, cause I don't wanna influence anyone or.
There you go.
I don't think that's fair.
I'm looking for that thief in the night myself.
They actually have those on some of them free apps you can get. I watched all four of them.
Have you watched them?
What?
The Thief in the Night videos, the movies?
No, I haven't.
I went to a very, very legalistic Baptist church as a child. And they showed those at church and we all sat and watched. They, it was frightening for a six-year-old and seven-year-old to watch the guillotine fall down on the lady screaming.
No, I was just, I was just thinking of the scripture where Jesus said he comes like a thief, like a thief in the night.
I know I have a screen share, Mike.
Coming after his crown of jewels.
Better than I do.
I'm ready.
This here is just a a free of the tribulation views. We got the crucifixion. And then the rapture of the church at the beginning of the tribulation. Then the second coming with the church at the end of the tribulation. The thousand year, the millennium. And then the last judgment, the white throne judgment, and then eternity. And then mid-tribulation, we got pretty much similar except for midway through the tribulation is the rapture. Then at the end is the second coming. And on all these views, the millennium on is the same, last judgment and eternity. And then the post-tribulation, the rapture's at the end and then they meet Jesus in the air, they're welcoming back. Which I think that has problems with the fact that when is the wedding supper? Unless that's on earth, but. That doesn't mean I don't agree with it. It's just, I don't know when they would be able to fit that in with that view. Okay. This, I didn't get on the PowerPoint, so we'll have to do it from here and I gotta read this part off my notes. These are comparisons of Christian millennial teachings and there are different ones. There's four different ones. Alright, four views on the millennium. First off, what is the millennium? And we already read that Revelation twenty-one, one through ten told us about that. A period of a thousand years, especially when calculated from the traditional date of the birth of Christ. An anniversary of a thousand years. There are a few views on the millennium. There is dispensational premillennialism, historic premillennialism, post-millennialism, and amillennialism. So what are these different views? Dispensational premillennialists hold that Christ will come before a seven-year period of intense tribulation to take his church, living and dead, into heaven. After this fulfillment of divine wrath, he shall then return to rule from a holy city, a new Jerusalem, over the earthly nations for one thousand years. After these one thousand years, Satan, who was bound up during Christ's earthly reign, will be loose to deceive the nations, gather an army of the deceived and take up to battle against the Lord. This battle will end in both the judgment of the wicked and Satan and the entrance into the eternal state of glory by the righteous. This view is called premillennialism because it takes place the return of Christ before the millennium and it is called dispensational because it is founded in the doctrines of dispensationalism. What is dispensationalism? An interpretive movement rooted in the nineteenth century marked by a segmentation of God's redemptive plan with a strong emphasis on his future redemptive plan for national Israel. Forms of dispensationalism have grown and popular steadily since Schofield placed it, its doctrines in his popular study Bible. Two, historical premillennial, millennial, millennialists place the return of Christ just before the millennium and just after a time of great apostasy and tribulation. After the millennium, Satan will be loosed and Gog and Magog will rise against the kingdom of God. This will be immediately followed by the final judgment. While similar in some respects to dispensational variety in that they hold to Christ's return being previous the establishment of a thousand-year earthly reign, historical premillennialism differs in significant ways notably in their method of interpreting scripture. A, Israel and the church, the church is the fulfillment of Israel. Kingdom of God present through the spirit since the Pentecost to be experienced by sight during the millennium after Christ's return. The rapture, the saints, living and dead, shall meet the Lord in the clouds immediately preceding the millennial reign. The millennium, Christ will return to institute a thousand years on earth. The millennium will see the re-establishment of the temple worship sacrifice as a remembrance of Christ's sacrifice. Post-millennialism believes that the millennium is an era, not a literal thousand years, during which Christ will reign over the earth. Not from a literal and earthly throne, but through the gradual increase of the gospel and its power to change lives. After this gradual christianization of the world, Christ will return and immediately usher the church into their eternal state after judging the wicked. This is called post-millennialism because by its view, Christ will return after the millennium. The millennium, a golden age previous to Christ's second advent, during which Christ will virtually rule over the whole earth through unprecedented spread of the gospel. The large majority of people will be Christian. And I'll tell you later on in the teaching which one of those I believe too, but I don't think we're gonna go witness to everybody and get them saved and I think that Christ is going to be in the millennium, so I'll give you a clue on which one I don't believe. A millennialist believes that the kingdom of God was inaugurated at Christ's resurrection, amillennialism. Hence the term inaugurated millennial, amillennialism, at which point he gained victory over both Satan and the curse. Christ is even now reigning, hence the term non-millennialism. At the, and nun means now, at the right hand of the Father over his church, after the present age has ended, Christ will return and immediately usher the church into their eternal state after judging the wicked. The term amillennialist actually a misnomer for it implies that Revelation twenty, verse one through six is ignored. In fact, the amillennialist hermeneutic interprets it. And in fact, much of the apocalyptic literature, non-literally. What is a misnomer? A wrong or inaccurate name or designation, a wrong or inaccurate use of a name or a term. What is hermeneutics? A branch of knowledge that deals with interpretation, especially of the Bible or literary texts. And then I also, since we've been talking about dispensationalism, what is dispensationalism? It is a particular hermeneutic or analytic system for interpreting the Bible based on a literal translation and which stands in contrast to the traditional system of covenant theology used in biblical interpretation. Dispensationalism was first developed by John Nelson Darby around eighteen thirty and considers biblical history as divided by God into dispensations, defined periods or ages to which God has a lot of distinct covenants or administrative principles. According to dispensationalism, each age of God's plan is thus administered in a certain way and humanity is held responsible as a steward during that time. Dispensationalists presuppose that start with the inductive reasoning that biblical history has a particular disc. Okay, where did my writing? It's getting too dark. And the way God reacts to human and the unfolding of their sometimes supposed tree wills. I skipped arc, isn't gonna read it. What is inductive reasoning? Is a method of reasoning in which a body of observations is synthesized to come up with a general principle. Truth of the conclusion of an inductive argument is probable based upon the evidence given. What are the seven dispensations? Can I get a map on here of that? Dispensation of innocence, dispensation of conscience, dispensation of human government, dispensation of promise, dispensation of the law, dispensation of grace, dispensation of the millennial kingdom. Dispensation of innocence is in Genesis one through twenty-eight. And also in two, fifteen through seventeen. This dispensation covers the period of Adam and Eve in the Garden of Eden. In this dispensation, God commands, or two, one, replenish the earth with children, two, subdue the earth, three, have dominion over the animals, four, peer for the garden, five, abstain from eating the fruit from the tree of knowledge of good and evil. God warned of the punishment of physical and spiritual death for disobedience. This dispensation was short-lived and was brought to an end by Adam and Eve's disobedience and eating the forbidden fruit and their expulsion from the garden. Dispensation of conscience. It lasted about sixteen hundred and fifty-six years from the time of Adam and Eve's eviction from Eden until the flood, Genesis three eight through eight twenty-two. This dispensation demonstrates what mankind will do if left to his own will and conscience, which have been tainted by the inherited sin nature. The five major aspects of this dispensation are, one, a curse on the serpent, two, a change in womanhood and childbearing, three, a curse on nature, four, the imposing difficult work on mankind to produce food, and five, the promise of Christ as the seed who will bruise the serpent's head, which is Satan. Dispensation of human government began in Genesis eight. God had destroyed life on earth with a flood, saving just one family to restart the human race. God made the following promises and commands to Noah and his family. God will not curse the earth again. Noah and family are to replenish the earth with people. They shall have dominion over the animal creation. They are allowed to eat meat. The law of capital punishment is established. There never will be another worldwide flood. The sign of God's promise will be a rainbow. Noah's descendants did not scatter and fulfill and fill the earth as God had commanded, thus failing in their responsibility on this dispensation. About three hundred and twenty-five years after the flood, the earth's inhabitants began building a tower, a great monument and a example of their pride, Genesis eleven, seven through nine. God brought the construction to a halt creating different languages and enforcing his command to fill the earth. The result was the rise of different nations and cultures. From that point on, human governments have been a reality. Dispensation of promise started with the call of Abraham, continued through the lives of the patriarchs and ended with the exodus of the Jewish people from Egypt, a period of about four hundred and thirty years. During this dispensation, God developed a great nation that he had chosen as his people, Genesis twelve, one through Exodus nineteen twenty-five. The basic promise during the dispensation of promise was that the Abrahamic covenant. Here are some of the key points of the unconditional covenant. One, from Abraham would come a great nation that God would bless with natural and spiritual prosperity. Two, God would make Abraham's name great. Three, God would bless those that blessed Abraham's descendants and curse those that cursed them. In Abraham, all the families of the earth will be blessed. This is fulfilled in Jesus Christ and his work of salvation. Five, the sign of the covenant is circumcision. Six, this covenant, which was repeated to Isaac and Jacob, is confined to the Hebrew people and the twelve tribes of Israel. Dispensation of law. It lasted almost fifteen hundred years from the Exodus until it was suspended after Jesus Christ's death. This dispensation will continue during the millennium with some modifications during the dispensation of law. God dealt specifically with the Jewish nation through the Mosaic covenant where the law found in Exodus nineteen through twenty-three. The dispensation involved temple worship directed by priests with further directions spoken through God's mouthpieces, the prophets. Eventually, due to the people's disobedience, the covenant, the tribes of Israel lost the promised land and were subjected to bondage. Dispensation of grace and which we now live in, it began with the new covenant and the shedding of the blood of Jesus Christ on the cross, Luke twenty-two twenty. This age of grace or church age occurs between the sixty-ninth and seventieth week of Daniel nine twenty-four. It starts with the coming of the Holy Spirit on the day of Pentecost and ends with the rapture of the church. First Thessalonians four. This dispensation is worldwide and includes both Jews and Gentiles. Man's responsibility during the dispensation of grace is to believe in Jesus, the son of God, John three eighteen. In this dispensation, the Holy Spirit endwells believers as the Comforter, John fourteen, sixteen through twenty-six. This dispensation has lasted for almost two thousand years and no one knows when it will end. We do know that it will end with the rapture of all born-again believers from the earth to go to be with Jesus forever. Following the rapture will be the day of the Lord, God's wrath on a sinful world. Dispensation of the millennial kingdom of Christ. It will last for one thousand years, Christ rules on the earth. The kingdom will be fulfilled, the prophecy of the Jewish nation that Christ will return and be their king. The only people allowed to enter the kingdom are the born-again believers from the age of grace redeemed Israel and the resurrected Old Testament saints. No unsaved person is allowed access into the kingdom. Satan is bound one thousand years. This period ends with the final judgment. And we read that in Revelation twenty. The old world is destroyed by fire and the new heaven and the new earth will begin, Revelation twenty-one and twenty-two. And that's the end of the dispensations. And I just thought it was fair to cover that as well.
That's part of the whole book, Revelation twenty-one and twenty-two.
Here's something else I wanted to show you that I'm really not gonna go into, but there is good teachings on this. Uh, it's about the Jewish feast days, which comes from Leviticus twenty-three. And it has the spring feast days, which are Passover, unleavened bread, first fruits, and Pentecost. And then it has the fall feast days, which are trumpet, day of atonement, and tabernacles. At these feasts, Israel went through in the Old Testament and Jesus fulfilled the spring feast in the New Testament. He was the Passover lamb. He was buried in the earth for three days, which represented the unleavened bread. Um, he was the first fruits as the, at the resurrection. And the Holy Spirit came on the day of Pentecost and fulfilled that feast. We still have three fall feasts to go, trumpets, day of atonement, and tabernacles. And, uh, but there's also good studies you can go into on this that pertain to end times, especially the fall holidays. Uh, let's see, what time I got, seven forty-four. I think that's it. I'm not actually gonna get into the book, lesson one. I wanted to make sure that we covered all the definitions first and um, went through all the different millennials and the rapture views and the dispensations. And from here on, we're gonna go through Revelation scripture by scripture. And, but we're also gonna include some of the other puzzle pieces that I said from the Olivet Discourse and Daniel and cause I think it really puts the picture together. If you get the verses to plug them in. Cause you might read stuff in Revelation, but if you go into the Old Testament and find the passages, it gives you the complete picture of what they're saying, so that makes it a very, a lot more in-depth study when, and we have to look at the whole counsel of God when we're trying to study this topic especially, so. But I'm glad everybody came and um, I hope it was interesting to you. Sorry it was a lot of reading, but I thought it was necessary to explain all those things, cause I didn't even know what all those terms meant. There were some terms in there I didn't know, so it was nice to know it and if there's some of you that didn't know it, well, that's why I wanted to hit the basics. It makes it easier for us to go through the book when we know what things mean. But um, I mean, that's all I have for the Revelation Bible study for today. I hope you come back.
Hey, what about asking them what they, um,
I just done with the study part, but we can do that too. We still got fifteen minutes, fourteen minutes. The other thing we wanted to ask was what do each of you want to get from this study? I mean, you don't each ask, but what are some of the things that you guys wanna get out of studying Revelation or um, Bible prophecy? Anybody got anything? Like maybe how they, like one thing I would say would be like how it relates to current events and there might be other things people wanna learn. I mean, I guess, why did everybody come today? Was it just for the Bible study or was it because it was the book of Revelation or prophecy or?
God's fingerprints are everywhere. You can look outside and read the newspaper and there's not much difference than, than what Revelation says. Jesus says, read and heed. That's what he says in the first part, read and heed.
This is also the only book of the Bible that says twice, once at the beginning and once at the end. Those who read it will be, receive a blessing. So it must be pretty important to God if he tells us that and we don't read those things in the other books and this book says it twice, so. It's an important, pretty important book and it's also the revelation of Jesus Christ, so this is actually his words that he gave to John to share with the church. So it comes from Jesus directly.
That's a lot of what makes John my favorite writer. Not that they ain't, no part good in here, but John's good. You know, the one that Jesus loved, he said.
Yeah.
The one that Jesus loved.
Can you imagine though, when he received that, what he was thinking? I mean, you know, he was human like the rest of us, you know, did he sit down and think, they're gonna think I'm nuts. They're gonna think I'm nuts, you know?
He heard the voice of Southern Thunders and was told not to write it down, so maybe someday we'll find out that mystery.
Right, right.
And he was imprisoned and persecuted, but he was the only one that didn't have to die for his faith like the rest. So that's a good book if you haven't read it, um, Fox's Book of Martyrs. Have you read that? It starts with the apostles and talks historically how they died. And then it goes into like all through history up till sometime after the Reformation period of the Catholic Church and Martin Luther and when those people were burned at, some of them were burned at the stake cause they wanted to know what the Bible said, not what the priest was telling them. And that was considered heresy. So I mean, it's a very good book if you wanna see those kind of things, but like I said, we get, uh, oh, what's that magazine?
Voice of the Martyrs.
Voice of the Martyrs. And there's people dying every day for Jesus. We're blessed here and we don't see, I mean, we get persecuted for some things, but we don't get. I can't say everybody, cause I know like in Columbine, that one girl said, are you ready to die for Jesus? And she said, yeah, and you took her life. But we don't see that on a regular basis in this country. I know the other one was like in South Carolina at the church where the guy just started shooting Christians, but other than those rare instances, we don't see that in this country on a regular basis. Like they do, like they do in China and the Middle East. But the Bible says it's coming, so.
Well, we can see Russia and the Ukraine right now and if we know anything about Ezekiel or Daniel or Revelation, we can see that Russia is in prophecy, China is obviously in prophecy with two hundred million horsemen. Nobody else has got an army like that but China, so it has to be. And it's written, it's written and it's a hundred percent accurate. I don't think it's ninety-nine percent accurate, I think it's a hundred percent accurate.
Yeah, me too. And the other thing is like, we don't know what happens to each and every country in the Bible, cause it doesn't tell us, but it tells us how nations relate. nations relate to Israel in the Bible and that's what the Bible, Israel is the sinner. And that's where we all need to keep our eyes because that will tell us a lot of things. And we don't have to be scared or think that we don't know it. A lot of people don't read Revelation because they think it's hard and they don't understand it and but it's not hard. It's very simple. And if you pray and have an open mind and read the words on the page and have the Holy Spirit teach you that, it's easy to understand the book of Revelation. You don't have to guess which one of these rapture views is the correct one because the scripture will tell you plainly, so.
Your normal thinking.
Notes that I have is prophecy is history in advance. I totally believe that it's a hundred percent true. And it was given to us to comfort us.
Yeah.
And some prophecy has dual fulfillment, like it might have been some things in Daniel was fulfilled then, but I also believe they're talking about the end times too, so. There's dual fulfillment prophecies like that, so. Anything else?
One would think that historically, if you wanna see it that way, that you would think the end times would come between, let's say, like it happened a couple years ago between Israel and Iran. Okay, but it didn't. Now we gotta fight Russia and Ukraine, which could be the start of the end time very well.
Well, that's what I was talking about earlier. I was like, if I would have lived, been alive in the forties, I would have thought that was the end times. Hitler fills the shoes of the Antichrist and all the wars and rumors of wars, but like I said, the only difference between then and now is Israel didn't exist as a nation, and now they do.
That's when the end times clock started.
Yep.
Yeah.
So.
We're recording the end times, quite honestly.
Isn't that a generational past?
Yep.
Exactly what it says.
May fourteen, nineteen forty-eight, was when Israel.
And we, and we think it's bad now, it's, this is nothing compared to the things that are described in the book of Revelation and and Joel and some of the other books that talk about the wrath of God and the day of the Lord, so it's gonna get a lot worse than this, so.
Even King don't write horror stories like that.
No. So if anybody doesn't know the Lord as their Savior, which most of us do, but somebody might be watching this when I post it on YouTube, you don't, I mean, you're not covered by the blood of Jesus if you don't know him as your Savior, so.
You'd think about finding out, presumably.
This would be a scary thing to somebody who's lost, but you don't have to be scared. You, you have a Savior that will help you through it and help you through tribulations you have today in your life and so I would challenge anybody watching to accept Jesus as your Lord and Savior and don't think you got all the time in the world. I've heard some people say, "Well, I can get saved anytime," or "I'll get saved in the tribulation when it gets bad," but what I read is that God will send a strong delusion and if you reject him now, you might not get that chance then, so I wanna put it off.
And tomorrow's not promised.
That's right.
Today is the day.
Yep, yep, we're not, we're like a mist or a vapor. We're here one minute and gone the next. That's what the word tells us, so.
I can assure you, if you don't believe that I have every reason to. He has never left me and forsaken me, never, ever. I promise you that on the authority of the Word of God. It's real.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anything else?
You know, you asked, "Why did we come?" Right here, iron serpents are iron. We don't know that the building will exist forever, we, you know. We may meet like this. We don't know what it looks like.
Didn't they all tell you about our idea?
What's that?
You can cut the video before you share them.
I wanna empty out our garage. It's like, it's like twenty, twenty foot, four by, I don't know, ten, and turn it into a chapel.
Let's clean it up, right?
I'm gonna turn it into a chapel, yeah, after I clean it out, yep.
Do you need any help?
Maybe.
We got a dumpster.
You can sell the tractor and.
If, if it gets bad, we might have to meet there or somewhere like it.
You're kind of, have a, a bit of, uh, laughter about that, but we don't know that that's not going to be, because.
I was serious when I said it.
It's happened before, it's not, not unlikely that it won't happen again. Most likely it will.
So.
Well, y'all are welcome here anytime.
Yeah.
Like I said, we live here, so I can't promise you what the condition will be like, but we'll be here, so, and you're always welcome.
Yeah, wanna walk in our house.